And before, yeah, gotcha. And before we start this, we've had a member ask if we could take a short recess. So can we take a 10-minute break here and we'll come back in about 10 minutes? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now back in session here and we will turn it over to Anthony.
A few weeks ago, we met and as we talked about our roofing needs, we asked Ms. Lane Wallace to look at some of our roofs before we replaced the roofs, to look at some roofs for, see how, what the possibility was of adding some solar panels because we felt like that would be the time to do it. So she has put at your desk a little overview and I'd like to turn it over to her and just kind of bring you up to date where we are on that.
Okay, guys, as I suspected, y'all have wonderful roofs for solar. Nice, flat, most of them don't have too many shading issues. It's perfect. And the only thing that gets in the way is sometimes there's some shading issues and then I put huge margins around any mechanical equipment or anything like that that you have on some of the roofs. And so that just minimally, you know, like it makes you able to use maybe 50% of one roof instead of 80% of one roof. But just great potential for solar overall. So what I did is I have these like four categories here you can see, not viable, viable, potential site, future site. Let me break those down for basically what they mean. Viable, that's the win-win. That means that it looks great for solar and you're already planning on re-roofing it in the next three years. So that's the kind of, this is an easy decision for us. The potential sites, you're doing major roof repair. The roof still only has five to 10 years left and if you just go ahead and replace the whole roof, then it's, then you can go ahead and put solar on it. But right now, you're putting like an aluminum coat on it, which will give it like maybe 10 more years of life and kind of delay the service, but if you just go ahead and replace it now, then you can put solar on it. So those are the potential. So definitely want to get your feedback if you guys want to even look at the potential or just keep it to the viable because you've got lots of viable roof space already. The future sites, I did not do a full analysis on, so the numbers look really weak, but really all have, every other roof you have is a future site. Some of these are like where the roof, like I had information on the roof, like the, and it looked really good. But it's basically like roofs that you're going to replace in 10-plus years or like, you know, anywhere from like eight to maybe 15 years. They have enough life on it where it doesn't make any sense to replace it right now. So you want to like just hold off and maybe that'll be phase eight or nine down the road for solar. But that's just a partial analysis. So trust me, you have a lot more potential. You probably have double of what's viable now in the future site. That's not conclusive, to say the least. And then the not viable, it looks like you have a lot, you know, it says 100 right there, a number of roofs evaluated were 100, but a lot of these are like your concession stands, your outhouses, storage houses. I didn't put any solar on any mobile buildings because I wouldn't trust the life of that mobile building. So that's a lot of those, like very small buildings. You'll see like Coriolite Middle, they have like 14, that's, all those little outhouses around the property that y'all are re-roofing. It just doesn't make sense to run the electricity out there when you can only put maybe five panels or something on these small buildings. So we kept it to mostly like your big, large roofs that you're getting completely redone is mostly what the viable is made up of. So looking at the potential, and we'll just look at viable, just to keep it simple, and we can always add.
You're loud enough.
Okay. I told him, microphones make me nervous.
Me too.
Anyway, so if you look at the viable roof space, you've got 87 roofs that all look really good for solar. Some of them, you'd just be putting solar on about 50% of the roof, not necessarily the whole thing. Maybe you have like one tree or something like that or equipment. But some portion of that roof has really good potential for solar. So if you look at the estimated potential, like how much solar you could fit on the roof, you're looking at around three to four megawatts. And if that doesn't mean anything to you, which doesn't mean anything to most people, that's like the average size of like one utility scale solar that you'll see. Like the Rockwell Farm that went out, that was a four-megawatt solar system. So what that means to us as a school is once, once we own the system, you'd be looking at avoided costs of somewhere in the range of like $400,000 to $1 million. And that depends on a lot of variables. It mainly depends on the cost of electricity, how much you're avoiding. So like today's rates are around 10 cents per kilowatt. You can see like that's the low range. So if the pricing stays the same, which it's already increased 7% from that, so it will definitely be more than that. But that kind of shows like what we're going to save as a school system when we own these systems and we're net metering and we're using this power ourselves. And then I threw in there just because I know you'd like to see the initial investment, which would all come from private money. It wouldn't be anything that the school would need to come up with. Any questions so far? I don't want to keep rambling on.
Can, how long before typically it turns over to us as the owner?
There's a few different financial models that I've been exploring. If we want to do it that way, where like the investors purchase the system, they get all the tax credits out of it, and then they donate the system to us. That's typically like six to eight years. And then we'll own, and I actually discounted all of this. This would actually be your earnings because the system degrades marginally over time. So I went ahead and like degraded it. This is if we get, in year six, we'll be making, you know, 400,000 to a million dollars in revenue from it. So that's six years down the road. The other option we can do is we can lease the equipment for basically exactly what we'd be paying for our electric bill for, like kind of like a fixed rate estimated and sign a contract that way, in which case we'd never, we'd just be leasing the equipment from an investor. That's another model. There's a few other models I'm exploring, but a lot of it depends on, and I hate to get into politics, but it's very relevant for you guys right now. There's two bills in the General Assembly right now for solar. One is to extend the tax credits, which is really important, no matter what, to help attract investors to this project.
And currently, they expire?
They, they're set to expire at the end of this year.
Okay.
It's looking promising. I mean, I can't guarantee anything, but I think like that, that bill has a lot of good, a lot of support. It's looking promising that it'll carry over. But our project will kind of be dependent on that. We need that to go through, especially since we don't know when, I don't want to, we can't, we can't go to the investor and say like, well, we might have the roofs in by 2015. They, they're going to want that tax credit to be there in 2016 as a sure thing because we're definitely going to be carrying this project out. The way I would structure it would do like phase one, phase two, phase three of solar, you know, and like you guys have the roofs in by X date and they come in. It only takes about four weeks to put the solar on, so you don't need much time. But just say phase one will be in 2016, phase two, 2017, phase three, 2018, just, just in line with like what your roofing plan is now. So just match it to your roofing plan. So that bill obviously will affect like whether or not we can attract investors to this easily. The other bill that's in play right now would be amazing for you guys if it went through. It's, it's a bill for third-party sales. And it would allow you guys to pick, instead of buying energy from Duke Energy, you could have someone install solar on your roof and then you have a purchase-power agreement and you purchase that energy directly from like SolarCity or one of these big solar developers. And you have a fixed rate, let's say, you know, 10, 12 cents per kilowatt hour for 25 years, for the life of the system. That would be amazing for you guys because I know it's hard for you to raise money for the roofs. What, I've talked to SolarCity specifically and I've heard this about several other developers out in California in the Northeast. This is legal in every state but six states. We're one of the very few states that doesn't allow third-party sales of electricity. Georgia just passed it with flying colors. They're allowing it now. And now North Carolina is really trying to push, but of course, Duke Energy doesn't want competition. Can't blame them. But if, if this goes through, what it allows is the SolarCity companies, they will come in and they will pay for your roof. They will pay for like the entire cost of your roof replacement if you let them put solar on your roof. It's like, that's their business model. So it would actually like cover a lot of this money that you're trying to raise right now for your roofing projects. So that bill would be completely instrumental in helping you guys. It would save the school a ton of money and you'd get the solar thing on top of that. It's a win-win. It's just we have to get this bill through. And so I've been lobbying with our local, local legislators to try to get them to support it.
So that would, if that bill were to pass, they would cover not only the cost of the solar panels, but also the replacement roof and then they would obviously reap the benefits of selling the energy down the road?
Right. They would, they would be selling the energy for you at a fixed cost.
At what part?
It would depend on the variables.
Well, you said they'd be selling to you at what?
A fixed cost.
At a fixed cost. Yeah. So you, you would know, like you'd get the numbers, you'd say, my utility bill is going to be $50,000 a year for the next 25 years, done. There's no variability, you know? Or, sorry, not 50,000, but you know what I mean, like 10 cents per kilowatt or kilowatt hour, based on usage, of course.
So you just basically would turn around and buy your power from them as opposed to Duke Energy?
Right. You're buying your power from them as opposed to Duke Energy. It's called third-party sales because right now Duke's the only, the only party in the state that's allowed to sell energy. So that would be really huge for this project. But there's a lot of, you know, it's very political.
Do you have any estimate on timeframe in terms of when they might take that up and actually look at pushing it through as opposed to just talking about the bills?
2016.
Okay, so it's still going to be a little bit then before we're going to know?
Yeah.
Dean?
I was just wondering, in that model, if you were to do something like that, the question had come up before about like the leasing, how long, six to eight years? So if you were to do something with a third party and it's a 25 or 30-year deal, what happens after 25 years? In our initial conversation we had a couple of months ago, I think I recall that the lifespan of the solar is about 25 or 30 years. So you would be kind of back to square one. I know that's 25 years down the road, but...
Right. With this, I like it better for a school district, if we can do it, obviously, because they're required, they're obligated to do all the maintenance associated with it. So you never have to worry about anything. You don't have to manage anything. You don't have to do anything. And then there's not much benefit to a solar system, but it's just one less thing that you have like kind of on your books that you're dealing with. They would own the system for the life of the system and after the contract, you would have the option to purchase it or have them come, or like purchase it for like a bargain buyout. It'd be like nothing. Or have them remove the equipment, their equipment, off your roof at the end of the lease period.
And that's a third party?
Or you could, or you could sign a new contract with them and continue to purchase the energy. And that's with the third party, which would be, I think it would be really great. It's just, we have to get, our legislators don't underst, like even the lobbyists who are talking to our legislators don't understand that what a great benefit this is for municipal and school buildings. Because they're, they don't factor in, they're like, wait, the cost of roof? You know, they're not looking at that when they're looking at these solar. They're just seeing it from Duke Energy's perspective kind of, and not like the huge benefit it can bring and the flood of money it can bring to help us do things like repair our roofs that are in bad, in bad shape. So it's just something I want to let y'all know that's out there.
Chuck?
This seems like a little premature. We will want that, see how that bill progresses through legislature. Of the three options, in your opinion, which one would long-term save this, the school board, the school system, the most money?
I think the option, having the investor pay for the system and then donate it to the school after six to eight years. That will save you the most money, for sure.
That, that's not the one that would replace the roof as well?
No.
Okay.
So you're still paying, well, that's, if you factor in the roof cost, then yeah, the third party's.
But, but in the long term, in the long term, you're paying for that roof. You're just doing it on a, on a monthly plan or yearly plan. You're not getting it for free, are you?
No, you, I mean, you do pretty much get it for free, the way they, the way they've done it. I've, I've looked at the numbers on a different project with SolarCity and it, they really do like, it benefits them, this is more than you want to know, it benefits them because then they don't have to worry about like a roof leak or anything like that. They know the equipment they're putting down, they're, they have their system, they do the same thing on every roof type of thing. It's like more automated for them almost.
I envision that over time, that the rate that they would be giving us would probably be a lot less, a lot, excuse me, a lot more than what we would be paying if we went another route, we'd be paying less for that energy. So they're recouping costs on that roof over, over time, it looks like.
Right. You're right. Exactly. But yeah, if you, if you factor the roof cost in, then yes, the third party's the best. If you're not, if you have the money for the roof and you just want to look at the solar, then the cost savings on the energy, you'll get more. But you won't get those cost savings as much if you do the third party, if that makes sense.
Other questions? Anthony, what, it seems to me when you look at, obviously there's a, there's some benefit to it. However, I think, you know, for example, if we said, hey, we want to move forward with the investor piece, currently the, the tax credit only goes to the end of the year. So it's possible you could start a couple of projects and the tax credit goes away and you're, you're there with one or two projects. And then again, at the end of six years, six or eight years, you're still stuck, even though you're reaping the benefits from the solar energy, you still have the maintenance of those panels and then at the end of 25 years, let's say, those panels are going to come to their life. So it just seems like there's some benefits, but I think when you start laying it all out, it seems like there's a lot of pieces we don't know.
That, that's correct. And we just wanted to bring this information to the board and let you, and so we wouldn't leave it open-ended. We wanted to bring this information to you. So when we do repair roofs in the future, if this is a option that our board wants us to continue to look at in 2016, when we know that, that the credit is there, then we could certainly make preparations to, when we do our roofs, we would make preparations for panels. So we just wanted to bring this back to your attention so you can be aware.
And let me ask one other question. I'm trying to look at all this and put it together and maybe it's in here. If we were to take every school currently that was a reasonable potential for this project, whether it be older or newer school, and we were to replace every roof and put new solar panels with that, do you have a cost of that? Any estimate at this point? I mean, it's for the panels, not the roofing. I know that, that would be separate, but...
I just looked at the roofs that you're replacing, for the most part, or that, that you'd gotten some sort of, like the viable sections, only the roofs that you replaced. I started like the first couple of schools, I was looking at future sites, but it, it takes a long time to evaluate each one for solar. So I didn't want to waste too much time looking at roofs that weren't at the end of their life yet. There's certainly some roofs in there. I think that, I don't have the data on them right now. Like they probably were replaced in the last 10 years, which makes them great candidates still right now for solar. But I just didn't have that data and I didn't want to waste too much time looking at roofs. You know, like this is plenty of solar right now. This is like three, four megawatts is a lot of solar that could, I think it's a great starting point. And then if we want to do more, it'll really be up to the investors of how much money we can raise, more than the roof space.
Is there any cap currently on the grant? I know, or the tax credit only goes to the end of the year, but is there any cap in terms of number of roofs that one person could do? So if somebody came and said, hey, you got 15, we want to do them all?
There, there are caps with the new bill. There's caps on how big of a system you can do. It's at a megawatt. But this is great because it's all broken up. Like if you look at the, the schools, the potential nameplate rating, there's nothing there really over half a megawatt. So they'll all stay, and they're like, it's, it goes by meter, by Duke's meter. So each meter can have up to a megawatt essentially, and you guys have tons of meters. So you're fine there.
And the credit for someone to invest and do this would be based on, I guess, the number of panels and the size of the total system. So the larger the system, the more, the larger amounting they would get back in a credit, correct?
Right. Right. So yeah, the system will be sized based off kind of, basically, I've, I've talked to about 10 investors at this point and a lot of them are really interested in this project. And I just wanted to check in with you guys and see where you are and see if you want me to continue to shop investors and start to get like, start to kind of model this out a little bit more. The biggest variable right now, I think, is the timing of the roofing. Like are we going to really realistically get roofs done by, I think, mid-October would probably be the latest you could do to have that two months to get the solar installed?
What do you think, Anthony? If we were to start, if we said yes and we had the money and we're going to start tomorrow, how many roofs could we redo theoretically?
If, if we had the money and you said yes now, we could do quite a few of them, I think, but, but...
Meaning like five, 10? I mean, what, what's, I'm just a ballpark. I'm just kind of curious what we're looking at for scale.
We, like the solar takes, for example, Jerrywood Auto just installed 300 KW of solar in four weeks. The solar install time is nothing. All you have to do is say, hey, your start date's going to be November 1st and they can get that in and get it interconnected by the end of the year.
But you could install multiple locations.
Right. They could absolutely do multiple.
And I think my question is more along the lines of if we were to replace the roofs first, you know, like do you have a timeframe in order to get it bid, get it done and be finished? How many could we conceivably do?
Well, but prior to October, to go through all the cycles, we, we wouldn't be ready by October to do that. I just don't think we'd be ready in October to...
To have any replaced at that point?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's that? Okay. And I knew it was a time crunch. I just wasn't sure exactly what that...
We'd, we'd have to go through the design phase and then all the approvals and then the, the selection and it would be real tight to, to try to do that prior to October.
So we'd have to pick, even if we wanted to pursue it, we'd have to go with some schools that have roofs that are conducive right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can probably do that. I mean, for one, we could do, I think the new administration building would fit in that time. Like that, that should be done by the end of the year.
That's one thing that we did discuss was the, the new admin building.
And that's not even in here. I didn't have the architectural drawings for it. So...
Any other thoughts or questions about that?
Yeah, I have one question. The tax credits, does that go to anyone that puts the solar panels in? Even if the school system put them in? Nope? Okay. I see your head shaking back there.
Right.
We can get the credit.
But an individual could. They don't have to be a corporation or a nonprofit. They can just be an individual.
Right.
As a school system, we cannot reap that benefit.
That's, yeah, that's why we have to do it this way. And that's why the third-party sales, it kind of takes out the investor part. It just gives you a solar developer and the school. It's two parties versus kind of having this third-party investor group come in. But there's a lot of investors that have been doing this and they're used to it and they like it. So it'll just be crossing our fingers that the tax credit's renewed for 2016 and it's set to be extended for five years. So we should have a comfortable window in that time to do all this hypothetically. I feel good about it being renewed.
Last question that I have. Do you currently, if we were to say, yeah, let's look at a couple that are conducive we can do now, do you think you have folks that would definitely sign on based on what you know and what you guys have looked at?
I think that the, the approach I'm looking at right now, I've talked to a lot of people about it, is to try to get someone to kind of sign on and do it right now, and this is like the test run for everybody, and do like a phase one. But I want to go ahead and have phase two, three, and four with that same investor pool. So it'll be super easy and we won't be pulling, you know, different, different rabbits out of different hats every, you know, trying to reinvent this investor group every year. I'd love to get like a good, big investor pool, which is, but there's a bunch of them out there right now. Solar's a great diversity for portfolios. It's kind of like safer than a bond type thing now. So I'm trying to find like that right investor that we can kind of grow with. So yeah, if we want to look at doing some projects in 2015, Anthony and I can discuss what the best candidates would be and we'll call it phase one, but we'll go ahead and set up phase two, three, and four with the same, same person is how I think would be the best. Now, if I can't find that person, then yeah, absolutely, we can find a one-off.
And let me add one thing. Before, my answer was I didn't think we could have all those things together before October. That's if we were looking at a total re-roof on some of our very poor roofs. Now, if it's a roof that has some repair work that needs to happen to it, but it's on our schedule, I think that's something that we could have done in that length of time. But if it's a complete strip-down and re-roof, then it would probably put us beyond that timeframe, so.
Would the board be interested? And I don't know if the end-of-the-month business meeting is too soon to get more information. From my perspective, I still think there's some benefit here, but I think we'd want to look at probably each individual school. What's the total cost? What's it going to pay us out specifically per school every year? You need to discuss the end-of-the-life, you know? So could we do that at the end of the month? Or is that...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to go ahead and, and pick a few. Like for one thing, like look at Irwin Middle. If you see the avoided cost savings, like $76,000, there's a really good chance that that school doesn't use that much energy. They probably do, but you, that's one of those things you need to go in and double-check and make sure that the bill, you know, you're not producing more energy than you're using. That's to no help for you guys. So little stuff like that, absolutely. I think we could pick like a few schools that we think we could do in 2015 and get kind of a small phase one, just kind of see what we could do for phase one by the end of the month, should be feasible.
And if that's, and if that's okay with the board, we can pursue that and have some more accurate numbers at our business meeting, at our meeting at end of the month.
Okay. What would the board like to do? Do you think we should at least pursue to move forward and get some more information on that? Sure.
We, we have money that's allocated for other capital projects already allocated by the county commissioners. Would there be any value in having some of that money repurposed? For example, some of the schools that we're looking at rebuilding somewhere down the line and using that for the roofing projects and maybe in the safety project, particularly the roofing projects, so you could get them, all the roofs done at the same time, pretty much, in a, in a reasonable timeframe? Because I, I think down the line, we, we're going to be short of money anyway and I, and I think the county commissioners, hopefully they're aware that we, we may need more, more funds and more money. So we could post on some of those projects, at least one of those projects, use that money for the roofing and some of the safety issues that, that we need. And that would give us a hit start on, on what we're talking about doing, getting it all done at one time. That's the only way actually we could, could come up with the money that would be needed to, to do all the roofs that need to be repaired.
Yeah, and we're actually going to get into, as we start to unfold, we've still got a good bit of this capital thing left. So we're actually headed that way. So that's, we'll get to that discussion. So hold on to that. Dr. Miller?
I would think if we got the five most viable candidate data by our end-of-the-month meeting, whether that's new roofs or even existing roofs that are prime candidates right now, I mean, I think it'd be a combination, but I think seeing as much data as could be put forward to if we do these five that need roof repair, roof repair, or these five that don't need roof repair but could go right now, for me, that would help me make a, a better decision on should we invest in this right, right now.
Well, I think the problem we've got now is that, like Anthony said, we really can't do any brand-new re-roofing by the end of the year. So we would have to only go with a roof that just needs repair. And since this won't be approved till next year to see if it's extended, we won't know...
Right, but what I was talking about... A roof that needs repair or one that is not on our list to repair.
Right. In other words, he said...
Oh, I thought you meant a brand-new roof to...
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The ones that could go right now because of the condition they're in are the ones that just need minimal repairs.
I'm with you. Yeah, I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
We can certainly have that list for our next meeting, the, the five top candidates.
Okay. I think that would, does anybody have any objection to that? I think the more information we can get, you know, we're going to have to do something. And if it only takes a matter of a few weeks, we can, we don't have to do it today, but we need to start collecting the information, so. Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, one other thing, I, I gave you this, I feel like I'd be, um, remiss not to share this with you. Um, NC Green Power, right, um, NC Green Power is, just came out with this, they're offering, um, a ten thousand dollar match fund to do just like a tiny little, you know, panels that would take up the size of this, like twice the size of this table, nothing huge, as a demonstration, um, for schools. Um, I already talked to a private investor, they're happy to match the funds. Um, so if you guys want to do this, it's there for you to take. It's a two, three kilowatt system, you can do it on any school you want, essentially. Um, I think you have to specify which one you do it on in the grant. Um, I feel like they would be, it would, I think, I think Horizons Unlimited would be a great place to do it, um, just because you have so many students going through there, but it's, of course, it's up to you guys, whatever you would want to. But I just wanted to let you know, um, a private investor has agreed to match the funds if you're interested in doing this. It's just, all you would have to do is write the grant, cross your fingers that you'd get it, and, and it would be there. But I just wanted to share that with you guys, if y'all want to do...
Let's go through the end of the year also?
It's, no, it's, um, the application, the grant application goes from April first to June first, so we need to get that application in. Um, and then I think that it'll be installed by, either by the end of the year or first thing, but there's no tax credits involved, you guys own it completely. Um, my suggestion would be to do a ground mount system where teachers can go, it's, it's pretty fun. Um, I've done it with like little kids, like Camp Thunderbird, and, and Lake Wiley has one of these, and it's like ground mount where you can teach them about geometry and teach about the angles of light and stuff like that, using the solar panel, and let them calculate, like, if you have a tree here, you know, how far does this need to be away? How far do you need to place the solar away? And it's like a fun way to teach geometry and physics and stuff like that. Um, and yeah, so it'd be great if we could get that, we already have the funds matched, so we'd be one of the first applicants in, I know, um, just from the buzz.
So if that's okay, if that's okay with the board, then that would be something we'd like to pursue, um...
As far as just, just that piece?
The grant.
Okay. And so would that all be covered between the grant and the match? There would be no out-of-pocket cost for the school system?
Yeah.
Really? Okay. And what's the benefit for the investor? I mean, because there's no return on that.
There is a investor, it's just a private donor.
Oh, ju, okay, so, okay.
So, yeah.
Just a philanthropist who's looking to support that cause.
Yeah, it's just a donation.
Gotcha.
And that person already agreed to donate it happily when he forwarded me this email.
Okay, great.
And said, let's do it. But, um, so yeah, it's kind of a fun little solar demonstration.
And I think if you want to bring that back in, in terms of a, a larger list of what you think would be good for that, I think we could look at that the end of the month as well.
Is there any other schools, like my first, I don't know these schools as well as you guys do.
My first guess would be Horizons Unlimited, um, but I don't even know, I, I'm going to have to check with them to make sure that classifies as a K through twelve school, because that's what it says technically. Um, if not, then it, where, where would y'all want to put this?
We could...
Do y'all want to talk about it offline?
That probably would be our priority, if we could do Horizons, and, um, if not, I think we would look at one of our STEM schools and what we're trying to do with STEM for the teaching benefit of that. And, um, that's, that's pretty exciting that we could test this and start trying this and get something going with solar. I think that would be an important first step for us. Um, I'm, just a question, um, for the board, um, I don't know that that necessarily requires a vote tonight, but if there's some consensuses, there's some advantage in getting in early, so does anybody have any hesitation about us going ahead and applying?
I, I don't. I mean, if there's no, no expense on our part, I think it makes sense. Anybody have any issue with that?
I'm really broke this one.
Ken, would you think there's something we need to vote on, or can we just do a consensus on that to move forward with the...
So if it's a non-committing application, yes, I would vote, you just, if you're going to submit an application for, for a grant.
For a grant.
Not having seen what it is, I can tell you it's going to be pretty...
So let's do this, could we have that agreement and look at it and have it attached to the end of the month, the packet?
Yes, sir.
Just since we didn't have it to look at before the meeting is what I'm saying.
Sorry.
So this is the exact, oh, I see now, okay, I'm, I, I see. So we could take this, look through it between now and the end-of-the-month meeting and take, bring it back at the end of the month as well.
And I'll email it out.
Oh, one more. Do we have one more?
Oh, yeah.
If not, pass this down, I can get a copy. Do you have one?
I just got a Zoom on this one, I'm sorry.
We can make copies. Yeah, we can make copies.
Send it to the board election.
And we can make copies tonight before, that's no problem, we'll make sure everybody has one to take home.
I'll, I'll pass it around, sorry, I, this is like brand-new, and I just, I, I don't want to lead it or anything, but I just wanted to make sure y'all, y'all knew about it, we got it, because this, you know, a brief, fun little demo.
Ken, did you have a comment?
Just wanted to get a copy.
Oh, got you, okay. And Dr. Miller?
As you put together the five, five, ten priorities for the end of the month kind of thing, you'd already mentioned the new central office, and since we have private funding committed for, specifically for solar, for that project, there, I think it's worth looking at, is there any way to leverage that money into being more money? I mean, okay?
That's exactly, exactly, we're on the same page, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that? If not, we'll just bring that back at the end of the month as well. Dean?
Just one question, looking, looking through this, and, and we just heard a reference to the early bird. Is my understanding correct that there's, there's only three, possibly as many as five?
It's like three to five, yeah, they have limited funding with it, um, and they're prioritizing tier one.
So at five max, five schools max, I'm, I'm just wondering about even two weeks being, if we need to get started before two weeks. And I'm not, I'm all about researching something before we make a rash decision, but if we could use a few more minutes now to clarify any possible hiccups or obligations, and maybe make an exception and vote tonight if that's something we would all agree on. If there's only five schools in the entire state...
Right, yeah.
I mean, that, that makes the pool a little bit more complicated.
Mr. Chairman, we would just be voting to submit an application. I don't see any downside to that at all. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would just be to submit the grant application.
I make a motion, we make that vote tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll discuss that, and I'm, I'm in agreement with it, but my understanding is, since it is just an application, and I read pretty quickly through this, even if we were to get it, and in the meantime found out there was something, we could refuse it if we didn't get it.